Good evening, everyone. It is May 3. It's okay. We are live.
I'm what?
So is that people? Is that other people talking?
That was us.
Oh, that was us talking. Oh, the coughing. It's playback. It's the delay.
It's the delay.
Okay.
Fabulous.
We are live. Great. All right, so welcome. It is Wednesday, May 3. The time is 6:32 and I am calling the Northborough School Committee into session. Tonight, we have a few things that are going to happen before we do our regular scheduled meeting. The first thing we are going to do is a school choice public hearing. Could I just see a show of hands, just so I know, is there anybody in the audience that's here for the school choice public hearing? Seeing none? Okay. So seeing that there's none, we're going to forego doing the presentation over again. And we are just going to move on.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Okay. So I'm opening the public hearing, seeing nothing, and now I'm going to close it. Okay. So that's closed. Now, we have a special recognition.
So I will begin, and I'm sure there are a lot of positive words to share. First of all, I want to thank Erin for her years of service as a school committee member for the community of Northborough. I think you have, from my perspective, done an amazing job. You've been a tireless advocate for students. You've pushed me in a positive way to ask for more and to make sure that we do what's right for students. You also have been an amazing leader during a very difficult time, COVID-19. But I would say probably that your greatest contribution is helping hire the Peaslee Elementary Principal, Dr. Cokely. So thank you for that. So you'll be greatly missed. I'm very appreciative, grateful for your years of service. You've done an amazing job. I also appreciate that there are other challenges for you as you look ahead in your future. On behalf of the Northborough District, thank you very much. We are very grateful. I do have a gift for you, but I'll turn it back over to the chair.
I want to say thank you so much. It was very sad hearing that you needed to take some time off. And I'm saying time off because we want you to come back.
It's a sabbatical.
It's a sabbatical. We won't let you off this time. But we want you to come back. In the three years that you've been on the committee, you've done far more than some people did in their lifetime on the committee. So we appreciate all that you've done. And you came in, and I think it was halfway through, a year and a half, before you actually stepped in this actual room for a meeting. Because the whole beginning was all on Zoom, so...
Yes, I think my first meeting was like seven hours on Zoom and I was like, what did I sign up for? This was a bad idea.
But it's been an absolute pleasure having you sit beside me and working with it for these past three years. So it's really been great. And I will miss you next year, but I'm not saying goodbye.
I'll be back, probably. Thank you. No, thank everybody for helping me and teaching me. And it really was a great experience, even though it was a little bit of a crazy experience through COVID and not really getting a taste of what real school committee was like for quite a while. But I really enjoyed it. I really learned a lot. I can say I was definitely guilty of being one of those parents that thought like, why don't they just do this? Or why, you know, I think it was very educational as to how hard it is to do certain things. And so I encourage anyone who has that same perspective to run. And it truly is very educational to learn how difficult things are to get accomplished in a district. And not just our district, but... So we do have a great district. We have great school committee and leaders and teachers, and we're very, very fortunate. So unfortunately, my new job is just way more than I bargained for. Hopefully, my boss isn't listening, but...
Hopefully, they are.
So I just was feeling like I could not give school committee as much time as it deserves. And that wasn't right, a good feeling for me. I didn't feel like it was right for me to stay here. Feeling like I wasn't giving my all. And I think I shared that my daughter was like, you can either succeed at one or fail at all, and you're just failing, so... I felt like that was my cue to like, something had to go for at least a short time. So... But my youngest is only in second grade, so I have a lot of years ahead of me here, so who knows?
And still on the PTO.
And still on the PTO. Nobody wants the PTO. I told you if you got me off PTO, I might stay.
It was a T-shirt to find someone to run for school committee.
I guess. I guess. But still on PTO, which I do enjoy, but that is also very busy. So thank you to everybody. And I think Mary Ellen, she's not here tonight, but she already signed me up for some committee.
Well, hey, and you can back for the subbing, although you don't have time to sub.
I know. I can't be a subbing nurse anymore because I actually work. But yep, she has also recruited me for that too.
So we have...
Thank you.
We do have a citation from the Senate to honor and recognize your years of service. So I will read this to you, but I do need my glasses.
Okay.
So it's "The Commonwealth Massachusetts State Senate Official Citation." And it says, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Erin Tiggleay Ferry in recognition of your dedicated service to the Northborough School Committee." And it's signed by President of the Senate Karen Spilka, Clerk of the Senate Michael Hurley, and State Senator Rodman K. Kennedy, and dated May 3, 2023. So you can hang this in your living room.
Thank you.
And then...
Thank you very much.
A token of our appreciation, we do have a small gift. And we wish we could have filled this gift with money for all the years of your service, but that'd be a conflict of interest.
Throw a teacher in there.
You have to throw a teacher in there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are going to pause for...
Cake and then executive session.
Cake. So do we, should we adjourn to executive session and do the cake type thing? And we'll do that. Okay. So we need to do a roll call to adjourn to executive session. One thing I did completely forget to say is that we are a hybrid meeting tonight. So we have two people that are tuning in through our beautiful owl, Joan Frank and Heather Richards. So Joan Frank is a member. So for the meeting tonight, we have Bryce, Erin, and myself in person, and Joan Frank online. And which, right, and then Heather. So we'll do a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session.
So we would just need a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion that we move into executive session at 6:40 p.m.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And then we're moving to executive session to discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the Northborough Teachers Association Unit A and Northborough Teachers Association ESP Unit C and Northborough Student School Custodians due to the chair's determination that the discussion regarding this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with the intent to return to open meeting. So we will be returning to open meeting. Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So we are adjourned to open meeting and reception.
Executive session.
Executive session. Yes, we are adjourned to executive session. We will be back.
First on the list is audience sharing. So we're going to have, Terry, where are we going to have them come up? Where's the best microphone?
Audio is best here.
Best here, okay.
Okay.
So we'll have you come up here, state your name and your address, and just to go over the rules of audience sharing, it's not a back and forth, there's no conversation going to be had with the committee, it's merely for the audience members to share their concerns or questions for future late will be answered. A future date will be answered.
Thank you. My name's Kristen Willemstegen. I live at 30 Oger Ave, Northborough. The concern comment I want to make, I was at the sort of open house type event they had for the White Cliffs development earlier this evening, and so I was talking to some members there about the development itself, as well as other developments that are down the pike possibly in town. And you might have heard also that, you know, the state now wants towns like Northborough that are MBTA adjacent to add apartments, somewhere around 300 to 400 apartments for Northborough, which would obviously have a huge impact on the schools. So I just want to bring that up as a concern. I was talking to members of the select board and just thought that there should be a lot of communication between the superintendent's office, the school committee, and the select board and other members of town, not that there isn't already, but that's sort of a big picture for the select board, but also a big concern, I think, for this committee. And my institutional memory, if I want to call it that, going back 30 years in the town, has seen more than one cycle of lots of building, lots of kids, the school can't fit, we need to expand it, that takes eight years, and then by then the school numbers are actually possibly going down or changing. So it would be great if we're all more forward-thinking about it, because there are, you know, those apartments at White Cliffs possibly, apartments at the baseball fields at Cross and Wegmans, which would then just add to Proctor, and what would that mean, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to bring that attention, more of a comment than a question, I guess, because I was at that event earlier this evening. Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you, Kristen. Hello, welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Jacqueline Taylor. I live at 15 Fernbrook Road in Northborough. I wanted to just touch on the new ELA curriculum. First, I want to say thank you to the committee who found the curriculum that was putting on. I really was excited about it. I looked into it, and with it following the science of reading and the new math standards, I was really, you know, pumped for it. Just some questions and concerns about it, just the funding of the curriculum, where that's coming from. I know that you might talk about it tonight, but it's not so much about the, you know, the first start off of the curriculum, but like future plans for the curriculum of, like, teacher training later on, and supplies that teachers might need, you know, as the curriculum builds. The other thing is just teacher training on this curriculum. I know that you started a new math curriculum this year in the elementary schools, and it took the teachers out of the classroom a lot to do the training. There was, I am a former public school teacher, and I know that there's a lot to go in with the training, and it's very important, but having the teachers there in school is also important as well, and then just funding for all of that, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience sharing? No. Two things that I just want to share briefly are the reason why Lauren, Billy Jones, is not here tonight is I want to offer her and her family congratulations. She welcomed a baby boy yesterday, and Malcolm is doing well, and Mom is doing well, and they're all doing great, and he's adorable. And so we offer a congratulation to her. And the reason Joan is not here tonight is because she has welcomed her, last, on Friday, she welcomed her second granddaughter, so she is on grandma duty. So I just want to offer to the Frank family also, congratulations, and we can't wait to have you guys back at the table with us, but lucky you to be helping a baby. Okay, so, new business. We're going to do NEF presentation.
So this evening, we're very fortunate to have Nicole Silva and Claire Kelsey here to share all the wonderful work that Northborough Education Foundation has accomplished over the years. So welcome, and please join us.
Terry, is it going to be okay for them to talk there, do you think?
Probably best over here, I think.
Or do you think we should?
Do you want us to come over here?
It's absolutely the best.
The best spot, over here. Okay. Thank you.
And just a general comment, Joan Frank has been a liaison to NEF and has attended many of their meetings, so thank you, Joan, for doing all of that work.
Yes.
Hi, Joan. Congratulations.
Hi, Claire.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you? First, I want to say thank you to all of you for everything you do for our schools. Really appreciate it. So as you know, Northborough Education is an all-volunteer group that raises money to help finance the costs of extraordinary curriculum and staff development projects, student services and activities, special programs and equipment purchases that fall outside the annual school budget. The money is raised through various fundraising events, which include the Apple Fest Gala, Gala Junior, Team Trivia Night, and we also run a Holiday Warm Wishes program, as well as the upcoming Teacher Appreciation Golden Apples Program. So this September, we awarded $34,000 in funds to 16 grant recipients of the Northborough schools. We received and funded grants from all four elementary schools, as well as Melican and Algonquin. Just to name a few of the programs we supported. At Algonquin, we helped fund the Titan Townhouse, which is a mock apartment that's used to help students in the TLC-1, TLC-2, Castle, and CAP programs to learn independent living tasks, so they learn how to make their own bed, clean the apartment, do some cooking, washing dishes, and laundry, and things like that. As well, we supported a new social studies course there, and the course is called Ancient Healers, Modern Medicine, and the Power of Connection, that studies the wellness traditions, beliefs, and practices of various cultures. At Melican, we provided funds for counseling in the classroom, which is a pilot program that's a social and emotional learning class for sixth-grade students. And from what I hear, it's been a great success, and I think they're going to actually continue and expand it through the other classes, through the other grades, so I'm really excited about that one. We also supported a grant for VR Oculus headsets at Melican. This one I've heard about endlessly, because my daughter, who's in seventh grade, used them, and they use them to immerse themselves in experiences like traveling through the human body and exploring solar systems and things like that, so they really, I know the kids have loved those. At Lincoln Street, we supported a grant that is not yet happening, but they're in the process of building it, and it's an outdoor learning space where students will have a variety of opportunities for experiential learning outside of the classroom. And then at Proctor, we funded a six-session yoga and mindfulness program, where the students, grades K through five, had the opportunity to work with a certified yoga teacher and learn basic poses and techniques to help them reduce stress. So those are just half of what we supported. Of course, you can always visit our website, which is the northboroughed.org, and that's Northborough, O-U-G-H. And then this year already, we have quite a few, so our grant cycle just ended Monday, and we've gotten quite a few intends to apply, which I'm really excited about. There's a lot of great stuff in there, so we're really happy about that. So one thing I did want to talk about is for quite a few years, we funded the Northborough Children's Book Awards, which is a program that is run in all four elementary schools for grade three through five. And because that was so successful back when it first was granted, we made it a cornerstone grant, which means it's automatically funded every year, so nobody needs to reapply for that. This year, we actually added another program to that, and that's the For All Four Elementary Schools again, and that was for the Read Across Northborough. So I brought Claire here to help speak about that, so she's the Peaslee Rutt Librarian, and she, on behalf of the elementary librarians, submitted the first grant for Read Across Northborough. So she's going to take a minute to just speak with you about those programs.
Yeah, so the last year was the first year for the Read Across Northborough Grant, and it benefits all the elementary schools, and it's also a collaborative event with Algonquin. So what we do is we collaborate with Mike Maserino, who is the athletic director, and he helps us to connect with different athletics teams, and then we have them come and read to the schools. And it happens in March, so the grant was written so that it'll happen in March every year to kind of honor, you know, the National Reading Month. And the books are purchased from the grant, and we, as librarians, we select the books, and they're based on SCL themes, culturally responsive themes. We use professional library, professional resources to look at reviews and pick the correct books. And then when the books are done with the event, they become part of our library collections. And it's a really exciting event. The students, the elementary students love having the teenagers come from Algonquin to read. We will, you know, definitely branch out this program. We want to keep it a connection with Algonquin and the elementary schools, but we'd love to have other student groups come, maybe, you know, like a drama group or the National Honor Society group, so we definitely want to reach out to different groups as the program continues. The kids love seeing the athletes. They come with their, you know, their gear, their jackets, their jerseys on. And then the kids write thank you notes to the athletes that, this year, they all wrote thank you notes to the athletes and send them over to Algonquin. I think that was really well-received. We got a lot of emails from the coaches, and Mike Maserino saying, you know, that their students loved it as much as our students loved it, and everyone's excited to do this year after year. And so, and of course, you know, we're so grateful to the NEF to make that possible, and it's a tradition, it's now becoming a tradition that all the kids, the kids look forward to. And as the elementary kids are noticing these high school kids coming in, they're saying, "Oh, I want to do that when I'm in high school." I was setting up a refreshments table for our guests, and one of the fourth graders came by and said, "What's that for?" And I said, "Well, we're having, you know, athletes come from Algonquin to read," and she's like, "Oh, I want to do that someday, because I want those snacks." So it was really cute, but it was such an exciting event for all four schools, and I'm happy that we can do it every year, so thanks to the NEF for that.
So that was, I have to say, that was a great event. My kids loved it. They had fun. You know, "Oh, we had a cheerleader. We had a football," you know?
Yeah.
And then, so they loved it. Is there any way it can be more than once a year? Or is it just, is it because, like, is it possible we could do like a science in the fall and the athletes in the spring, or vice versa, something like?
I don't know.
It's like eventually.
I mean, we could definitely, you know, look into that. We might have to write an additional grant.
An additional grant.
Yeah, because the grant we wrote is for the purchase of the books in the four schools, and the books are purchased, one per classroom, and then they become, they're all, like, we have 14 classrooms in Peaslee currently, so 14 different books, and then they become part of the library collection so that other students and teachers can borrow them. So, you know, I think that's a great idea, and it'd be really exciting, so another grant idea possibly in the works.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for everything you do. I know you guys work tirelessly. Thank you for funding the self-program at Melican. I love the self-program.
Oh, do you?
My sixth grader loves the self-program. And yes, it is continuing, right? Is that like public knowledge? No?
We'll hear.
It is now.
No? I'm asking, is it?
Yes.
Yes, and we'll hear more later in the meeting. Yeah.
Because the kids know, right? No?
Now they do.
My daughter knows, she's very proud of me. I don't know.
Why? Because she?
Because it's all my fault, that.
Joan raised her hand. I just noticed.
Yes, I heard the day, so, yeah, I just wanted to see it.
I just heard it was maybe continuing, and so I'm very thankful for that.
I was just going to say, yeah, thank you. You put in some great programs in the school. You threw a heck of a party, you know? And the reading thing, my daughter came home and she said, "This very big boy came in and read to us today." And he had his football jersey on, and all the other boys in the class were very excited about it. But she was, yes, she just thought it was cool to see someone of that age come in and read. Like, I don't think that's something that young people get to see enough of. And so, yeah, it's great, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. We have a call, a comment from Joan. I don't know if someone can unmute her, or Joan unmutes herself, I think?
She's good. Go ahead, Joan.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would just also like to thank the NEF and NEF for what they do, because it helps us in our budget times, the constraints that sometimes the week can have. And another wonderful thing is that this is always an ongoing thing for these grants. Many of our educators have to go over to get advanced courses, and I know many times you take a course in February, and you hear this great idea, and you would love to have some funding, and NEF allows, that is the vehicle that allows teachers to apply for grants and to get the funding. I was just thrilled to death when I heard about the Read Across America, I Read Across Northborough, and also that it was a cornerstone grant. The enthusiasm from Claire at our meeting that we had at the beginning of, in April, Claire was just fantastic, and the collaboration with the four librarians and working with Mike Maserino, our athletic director at ARHS, is just wonderful. One last thing, Noel, it's been an honor to work with you girls all these years on the committee, and I look forward to working together in subsequent years. One thing I'd like you to highlight that maybe you might have mentioned was what NEF is going to be doing for teacher appreciation, and that's between May 8th and May 12th, which is the Golden Apple. So could you just highlight something about that, and thank you very much.
Oh, sure. So each year, we do a Golden Apple program, and what it is, is you can purchase a Golden Apple, which is a certificate that you personalize for your teacher. And with the, so it's basically a donation to NEF, your teacher's name. So nothing too exciting, but for teacher appreciation, we always add something to that. So this year, we're actually adding a free ice cream program from Yonkers. So every time someone purchases one, that comes along with it for the teacher, so, yeah. So buyers today.
What is the deadline for ordering them?
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
So we're going to do a little bit of a slight change on the agenda. We are going to have the PTO presentation first, and then we'll have the principal report. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And do we want to start with Lincoln Street?
Do we want to start with Lincoln Street?
Hello.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Melissa Tugus. I'm the co-chair of the Lincoln Street PTO, along with Jen Marchionne, who is coaching soccer, so she couldn't be here right now. We have a treasurer, Julia Grants, Jennifer, and a secretary, Elizabeth. So it's the five of us that run the PTO every year. Our yearly goals and mission, we strive to foster a sense of community, to recognize and celebrate the students, the staff, and the families, and we do fundraising with the goal that we then use that money towards staff and student experiences. Our annual budget, we budgeted for income $12,700. Actual to date is $15,700. The biggest
The biggest reason for that is we did a fun run for the first time this year, and we weren't sure how that would, that would go, but we, we made six thousand, which I think was a good, good showing for our first time. Expenses, we budgeted seventeen four fifty, and we've only spent nine thousand to date. So there's a huge discrepancy there. The biggest budget item we have this year is hospitality, what we do for the staff. We spent seventeen hundred on that. And then we've been helping TLP, the Therapeutic Learning Program, with a lot of their programming. We've given, bought supplies for them, reimbursed them for items they've bought, and then they've had a few family staff nights that we've helped them with, food and snacks. Fundraising, our biggest fundraisers are the silent auction we do in the fall. We raised four thousand with that. Our book fair in November and March, we raised twenty eight hundred with that. The fun run, which we did for the first time in November, we got six thousand. And then we have a bingo night in April, which is only a few hundred, but it was a fun night. It was the first time this year we were able to do it in person in a while, so we had actually a much bigger turnout than we expected. So that was really nice, but caught us a little unawares. Community and spirit events, we've tried adding more of those than we used to do in the past. These are free events for families to come to. Trunk or treat, we do in October. Families just come set up their trunks for that, and then they supply their own candy, so that doesn't require anything of us other than reserving the parking lot. We just did a luau last week. We set up the cafeteria, we decorated it, we brought in a DJ. So that was our, our expense. And then we had parents and families donate drinks and snacks. And that was also a big turnout. And then we do pizza night in June. We just take a, we let people sign up ahead of time, so we know how much pizza to get, and then we provide the pizza, and we sold drinks for them last year, and we had an ice cream truck come. So that was another expense to rent the truck. But we have enough in our budget, and we just wanted to really focus on those kind of events this year, give back instead of always asking for, for money. Grants and appreciation of staff, grants were not a huge expense this year. I'm not quite sure why. We put it out there, teachers just haven't really been requesting much. We spent about thirteen hundred on that this year, mostly computer programs, headphones, and then the kindergarten wanted seat cushions, because the kids are on the floor all the time. So we did that. Teacher luncheons on conference days in the fall and the spring, and then we have one coming up next week for teacher appreciation week. And then we brought in the ice cream truck in August before school started for the staff. And then next week for staff appreciation week, we have, for the first time, the coffee truck coming, that I know some other schools have used, so we're gonna try that out. We figured it would be a little change from ice cream. We're doing that, a breakfast for the teachers. We had everybody fill out a little card with what snack and drink they want on another day, and we'll provide them with bags with what they, what they ordered. And then enrichment, also not a large expense this year. We need to work on better communication for next year, and we'll hopefully get that up. But for this year, we didn't spend much on that. We do have field day assembly coming up. I'm not sure what that will be yet, but we're, it's in the works. And then we had an author visit. Next year, we will have Potato Hill Poetry coming. And then we always have Pumpernickel puppets come for the incoming kindergarteners and the kindergarten of first grade. Go to that as well. And then the Discovery Museum usually comes, and they have different themes for all the And then just lastly, keeping families in the loop, we have an email that goes out every Tuesday with what's coming up for the near future. The principal puts our email in her newsletter weekly, and then we have a Facebook and Instagram page. So that was, that was it. I know you guys have a lot tonight, so kept a brief.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you coming tonight to speak with us. We appreciate all you do as the PTO.
Thank you.
I've been a PTO, you're on PTO, take it off PTO. So, you know, you're appreciated by, we know, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's really unfortunate to hear that you've got money left on the table.
I guess.
It's really, really unfortunate. You know, and it's, I don't know why. It's, I'd be curious to hear from the staff why they're not applying for the grants or wanting to do ones, and why the enrichment wasn't used. I know it's, you know, it's just bad.
Enrichment, yeah. That, Jennifer Wright had a part in that, in organizing that, so she were here, let her speak to that. So I'm not quite sure what happened there. But the grants, yeah, we, I would love to know. We put out an email last year asking...
And is it a rolling thing, or is it like a deadline?
No, it's rolling.
Okay. I wonder if you've thought about changing this thing? So we, at Prag, for example, they, they do a fall, you know, you have to have a right fall. I know the school, I'm pretty sure they do rolling. Do you do rolling too?
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Okay.
Might be something to try to say.
Right, okay.
Get all your things down.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we approve everything.
I know, I know, that's why...
I can see the wheels turning, and some of the people in the audience, I know, I know people I can talk to, and we've got some ideas. So I, I have a feeling that there'll be some people coming to the table in the future.
Perfect. Yeah.
Yeah, I would just thank you for all that you do for Lincoln Street School. I think the small topics of appreciation go along with educators, the coffee truck, the little menu that you sent, I was at Lincoln Street, and people were talking about. I was disappointed I didn't get one, but I will try to find out when the luncheon or the breakfast is, or after ice cream. But anyway, thank you, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And PTOs do make a big difference in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's got it full in lock.
I should have brought my glasses. I'm in denial. And that coffee truck sounds fantastic. Thought it went by our school on Monday, on Principal's Day. It didn't stop.
It didn't stop. It kept driving.
So, hello, thank you for inviting us. I'm Jen Callahan, I'm the assistant principal here at Melican.
And I'm Jennifer Kenny, and I am PTO president, my first year at Melican, so...
We are excited. I did some serious recruiting. I felt like I was a college coach again. We have had a very small PTO over the past two years. COVID, it was really Michelle Karp, Principal Karp, myself, and Pragya, who has been our trustee treasurer for all these years. It was just the three of us. So we, we kind of worked our way through those three years, kept a good amount of money in the budget for when there, there were times that we could get back to somewhat what we call normal, things like eighth grade activities, seventh grade activities. We just wanted to bring all of those back. So now we have a pretty consistent committee of eight to ten. They, lots of emails. We have a lot of great ideas, but we're doing a lot of magical things. So we are in the early stages of putting together some very nice programming at Melican. So here is our executive board. One exciting thing, you can go. This is exciting.
Yeah, so, just to go off of what Jen was just saying, it's been sort of a year of rebuilding, getting some new parents involved, getting the word out there, what our PTO does, learning, myself, what our PTO can do for Melican, and we were able to get nonprofit status. So we had it before, and so now we have that. So that was our big win for the year so far.
That's a big shot.
Very exciting, very exciting.
Very good.
Yeah, this is sort of just an overview of what the percentages for our budget looked like this year. You can see the biggest are enrichments and teacher grants, which, being on a PTO in elementary school, that was what I felt and what a lot of the families and parents thought, I think, was the most important, to help the teachers bring activities and supplies and what they needed for the children. So that is basically what our budget looks like for this year, and we will meet in the fall and redo it for next year, depending on what we have on the radar. The field trips may change with our, the field trips may change. I'll just leave that.
Yes.
Yeah, leave out that. What's the big number? Like, is it like ten thousand? Like, our whole budget? I'm pretty sure it was coming in, like, just, Pragya does all the numbers for us, but I think it was coming in just under fourteen thousand. Which I, I think she was saying, pre-COVID years, you know, was a little bit more, so we're working our way back to a better place with our financials. But, yeah, I think we're, we've got some good things on the, on the pipeline.
And to be able to provide those enrichments, that was really a big, a big push that we kept, you know, talking about, like, the teacher grants. And once we really got our committee, the PTO organized, we started to invite teachers, you know, come down, I'll get your coverage, let's, you know, try to get some grants. And so it has been fantastic. We have some enrichments coming up. Consistency, we'll start talking about the eighth grade dance soon, we've got a different committee for that. Field trips, the kids have been able to go to Boundless Adventures, the PTO helps support that, and Hanover Theater for the seventh graders, and the eighth graders have a whole slew of events that we do for them. Consistently, every month, we do a Roadrunner Raffle, just for like random acts of kindness, and the kids come down, and the PTO, you know, gives them little gift, little gift cards, to whether it's Company Farms or Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. And they have a lot of activities planned for teacher appreciation.
We do, yeah. We do have a lot. We have, I think, something every day next week, except Tuesday, the middle school, you guys aren't there. But, yeah, we've got, we're bringing in some lunch, we have a Coffee Tastries Day, some grab and go snacks. We're really trying to make it special for the, for the staff. One other thing I wanted to just highlight, because I think it's also really important, is under the field trips, that includes our scholarships, so we do have, you know, line item for families that need extra assistance, so that all the kids can participate in what we have going on. So fundraising, we always have spirit wear, we were able to bring back fun night, was this, was this, did we have fun nights in person last year? Did you guys have it?
No fun nights in person last year. And even, to go back to the spirit wear, this is the first time we were able to have, we have an online store, you know, like many other schools, and there's a kickback, because we just, you know, add a dollar or two to each item, so every, maybe six weeks, they send a check over to us, and we put that into the PTO.
And we try to highlight that, like, around Christmas time or something, when you bring your kids, might want Melican gear. We try to find times throughout the year that we can really push that, but it's open, I think, all the time.
Yes, it is.
So anybody can get Melican swag at any time. But we brought back sixth grade and a seventh grade fun night, and both were success.
So highly successful.
Jen was at both of them.
Fantastic.
The kids had a blast, like, can we do one every month? So just get ready for that, they want one all the time. But that also works as fundraiser, so if it's a sixth grade, that money raised on those nights will go into like kind of the sixth grade bucket and used for sixth grade events. So one thing we are planning that's coming up in June for the first time ever is a color run. So similar to fun runs, I don't know, some of the schools have done fun runs, but this one will be more of...
A little fancy, because we're in color.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a course with obstacles, little obstacles, and then, you know, we have parent volunteers that are gonna squirt the kids with some non-toxic color. Very safe, one-star...
Organic.
Yeah, we're providing them with sunglasses, yeah. And so it kind of makes, they can have their white t-shirts, will get sort of tie-dyed, and then it's sort of like keepsake. And we're trying to pump it up, and I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, and I hope, I think our, I guess we want to make money off it, but I think also we want to do something fun. We want the kids to have a fun experience with it too, as opposed to other kinds of fundraisers.
Right. And try to establish maybe some, an annual thing, what we can do as a school. And a selling point, if you are free, any of you, we invite you to sign up for the Dunk Tank. I am on there. I think you would all...
What day is that?
June second. I think you're all sick. June second, June second, you know, a farewell, Erin.
Yeah.
So the Dunk Tank will be, will be part of that fun.
Yeah. We always have the textile bins, which I think Melican does pretty well, from what I'm learning this year, from the textile bins. But then we did an event over around Earth, it was right around Earth Day-ish timing. And it was a contest between each grade, who could bring in the most, and the sixth graders, I think, really killed it.
Yeah, they did fantastic. So they're getting a little special treat on Friday, and then we're gonna have them kind of vote on maybe a special theme day that, you know, whether it's Pajama Day or Tide, you know, I know there's a theme day this week, so...
And I think they, total, was like nine hundred and fifty-five pounds that, that Melican brought in for that week.
Just one, yeah.
It was really cool, we just put the bins out, and the parents were able to drop off their bag, spring cleaning. So you've done it before, too, right?
Yes.
This wasn't the first time, so that was, I liked that one. And then we tried to do a couple restaurant nights. Those, you know, hit or miss, but, but Northborough House and Tavern are so generous and always willing to work with any committee that I've ever been on in the community, and they, so they were great. And so we've, you know, we like to give them the business, and they like to be part of the community. So these are some of the grants that we did for this year. So the first one is the VR, so how NEF was talking about the VR headsets, the PTO purchase, they're like the slides, different slides. So one we purchased this year was National Geographic, so that's just piggybacking on what NEF was saying. But we've got Model UN, after-school clubs, and the jewelry club, we supported them, field trip buses, scholarships, all the sports, the equipments and the uniforms that Melican does, Roadrunner Raffle that Jen was talking about. We're hoping to bring back a sixth grade overnight trip at some point, so we, we help with that. World of Difference, and then math team as well. So these are some of the grants that we were able to vote on and put through for, we like, we don't like to say no, so we're lucky this year that we, I don't think we had to say no to anybody who came for anything.
We did not. So we were able to send our students off to, say, their math team meets with these really cool t-shirts that said, "Melican Mathletes," and then on the back had an M2T, like a whole math equation. But they were so proud of it, so it was nice to be able to provide that for them, just as if they're like any other team in the building.
Enrichment programs and field trips, the sixth graders got to go to Boundless Adventures in the fall, that was super fun. They all had a blast. The teachers might just be recovering from it, I don't know. And the seventh graders went to Hanover Theater. And then we have some eighth graders going to Se La Vie in town, that's coming up in May. And then we're bringing in some dancers for seventh and eighth grade, French and Spanish students, to do like some world, she's a world language. Yeah, so they're gonna do some, some fun merengue, dancing, teach the kids. And then Chariot of Sun, that was seventh grade.
Yes, and that one was fantastic. We've had Chariot of the Sun in before, and again, with COVID, we haven't had them. We brought them back, and it was amazing. The kids were fantastic.
Music or dancing?
And it is, he reenacts a couple of myth, mythological stories, Greek myths, and he has kids come from the audience. And so he has them kind of practice and rehearse, and then they kind of mimic what he does, and it's, it's interactive, but it's, it's funny. You know, it's about forty-five minutes, and the kids absolutely enjoyed it. So that was, it was wonderful to see, again, we look like we're back in action, so...
Yeah, I love enrichment, and I went to the PTO Expo this year too, so I have all kinds of pamphlets to share for...
Sometimes I have to say, I didn't read that email yet.
And then some of the PTO-sponsored events, so we do a staff breakfast in December around the holidays, and then, like I was saying, next week, we've got something every day except Tuesday for the teachers and the staff, and the Roadrunner, that's something for the kids, is it monthly?
Monthly, yep.
Monthly, so the PTO helps fund the prizes for that raffle too, so those are some of our...
And we've talked about, we really, really would like to get into that place and space that we have, that money that we can start providing some of those things, that we're not trying to get money from the kids or the parents, even though fun nights, they're, they're like, here's a twenty. I'll pick you up in two hours. And I, and I get, we all get that, I think, I get that. So, you know, that's something that we would also like to do eventually, just host something that it's, you know, we're free for the kids, free, it's just, you know, like a community type, type of get-together, so we're working towards that.
We're getting there. That's it. I think that, I think that was it.
Great job.
Thank you so much. Again, PTOs, you, you really do help us as a district. You help the families, you're good communicating, everything, so.
Oh, yeah, Lincoln Street said, so we have, we now this year have, we have a Facebook page and we now have Instagram. And then Jen will send out in the parent squares or, you know, if we need a bigger blast to reach the parents. But the social media, I think, has been really.
It's been great.
Helpful to get the word out to everybody.
Because we actually have, this is for the first time ever, we've had, um, parents and PTO members volunteer to chaperone the dances. So we might have six or seven teachers, but then we'd have four or five parents. We're like, oh, can you be, do the candy duty? Can you do, you know, the bathroom duty? So it's nice, we're trying to get more people into the building, you know, and, and see what it looks like for the bunch of sixth or seventh graders. So that's been really great. They helped sell the music, candy at the musical this year. That was so helpful. So it's been great. It's been a nice partnership.
Yeah.
It's a good start.
So exciting.
So thank you. And also just congratulations on the five oh one three C designation. That's no small task, so congratulations.
I can't wait to get to Melikan next year.
KG.
Just so you know.
Coming for us. Got my sights set.
Uh, I know Proctor's been, so. Lincoln, are you five oh? Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it, I got it.
Then thank you and congratulations, Erin, and thank you for all your school committee contributions.
I want it off.
Thank you so much.
I'm trying to get it off. Where's your glasses?
Well, um, thank you so much. And I will welcome up now, Melikan, since I've bumped you already.
Thank you, Mrs. Carb. She graciously let me help out and take over with the PTO. So I'm very thankful. Here's my magic pen.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you to the Melikan PTO two point O. Very, very nice work.
So hi, I'm, I'm here to share the principal report. And, um, I think they knew I was doing them, so they, they wrote a dissertation for me. There's a lot going on at all the schools. So, um, May's a busy month at Lincoln Street. Third, fourth, and fifth graders will wrap up their MCAS testing soon. Students and staff have worked hard to be prepared for the assessments. Student, staff, and family had a wonderful walk to school day today. Thank you to our parent volunteer, Mrs. Collison, for helping to coordinate the walk. We appreciate our friends at the Coleman House for allowing us to use their parking lot as the starting point for the walk. On May sixth, students across the district are invited to attend a bicycle rodeo at Lincoln Street from ten to twelve. This is a fun way to teach, uh, children about the rules of the road while practicing safe bicycling. The rodeo consists of stations and courses where children can learn about bicycle safety and practice safe bicycle skills. Students from Lincoln Street, Z, Peaslee, and Proctor will gather on May seventeenth to perform as the All-Town Band, um, shares what they have learned in their rehearsals. The band's been working hard for this special event. On May twenty-third, Lincoln Street families are also invited to the Spring Band and Course Concert. We're excited to hear how much progress our musicians have made this year. And Lincoln Street, fifth graders will host a car wash at Lincoln Street as their class fundraiser. Feel free to stop by for a great cause. Peaslee Schools, in the midst of celebrating Wellness Week, we participated in the Walk to School Day today as well. We're incorporating mindfulness moments into our morning announcements. Our music educator, Colleen Burns, will lead all students in the cha-cha slide as part of the National All-Children Exercising Simultaneously Initiative. As we begin to wind down the year, the Peaslee teachers remain diligent about keeping students' needs at the forefront, identifying strategies and resources to support our students in the best way they can. Teachers are often partnering with parents to meet the needs of all students. We are making plans to help set students up for success in the next grade level. Our PTO has sponsored a variety of robust enrichment programs for our students. They work tirelessly in their fundraising efforts, including working behind the scenes to plan ways to enhance our students and teachers' positive school experiences. We'd like to thank our Peaslee PTO for their incredible support. And the next Peaslee All-School Meeting will be May twenty-sixth. Meetings have been a great way to strengthen the Peaslee community, work on core values, share learning experiences, and recognize achievements and talent. This month, students will be recognized for their utilization of our core values in their daily actions. May twenty-sixth is also Red, White, and Blue Spirit Day and the Northborough Food pantry drive. And from Proctor, as we wind down the school year, May will continue to be a busy month with a continued emphasis on maintaining our learning routines. Our third through fifth graders will complete their MCAS testing in the areas of math for all three grades and science, technology, engineering for fifth grade. Proctor School welcomes two exciting additions to our playgrounds. Through the generosity of the Proctor PTO and the fifth grade class of two thousand and twenty-three, soccer nets were added to the upper wing field. These will not only be enjoyed by the students at recess, but will also be enjoyed by the community. The long-awaited swings were also installed during the last week of April. The swings were generously funded through the Proctor PTO and donations from families. Over the summer, a buddy bench and augmented communication board from the Doug Flutie Foundation will be installed on the lower wing playground as well. On May seventeenth, the fifth graders, um, from Proctor will join fifth graders from the other elementary schools in the All-Town Band concert. Proctor will welcome our incoming kindergarten students as part of kindergarten screening on May eighteenth and nineteenth. This is often the first experience that our youngest learners have with Proctor, and we look forward to welcoming them. The Scholastic Book Fair will be returning to Proctor the week of May twenty-second. Students will be able to pick up books for their summer reading with a buy one, get one through Scholastic. And then finally, for the elementary schools at Z School, after working hard all year, this week, the Z Drama Club will be performing the play, The Emperor's New Clothes. Then they will have an evening performance on Thursday and Friday. And will also be performing for their classmates Friday afternoon. The Z third through fifth graders will be finishing their MCAS assessments as well. They're taking math this week and next. And then the fifth graders will finish with science, tech, engineering on the eighteenth and nineteenth. On May fifteenth, incoming Z Kindergartners will be coming in for storytime and craft. Parents will also meet with the kindergarten teachers for an orientation. We are excited about welcoming our next group of zebras to the school. They will also have kindergarten screenings on June fifth and sixth. And then finally, the first graders will be going to watch Housit Meadows on May twelfth. This will be the first field trip this group has been able to go on, and they are very excited about exploring the outside ecosystems as part of their science curriculum. Lots happening at the elementary schools. Um, and then finally, at Melikan, um, yes, we are thrilled to report that our first ever self-class, so Social Emotional Learning Foundations for our sixth graders has been a huge success. Thanks to Councilor Julie Marancy, this intentional focus on students' social emotional learning has yielded positive results with students referencing their self-learning across the school day. Grounded in the Castle Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Framework, this class teaches students about the adolescent brain and the many changes happening during this stage of life. Through hands-on activities, class discussion, and real-life connections, students learn and practice skills that are essential for success in school, work, and life. Topics include relationship skills, navigating social situations, emotional regulation, conflict resolution, and self-adversity. For next year, all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will have one self-class per week. This class plus our weekly health class plus our two PE classes each week will help round out our health and wellness program for all students. From Wellness Week this week, our self, health, and PE teachers provided choice activities for staff in lieu of our faculty meeting on Monday. Choices included chair yoga, a very interactive and exciting game of pillow polo, um, interactive Kahoot, and a wellness walk. Our students are also participating in the wellness walk this week. May is a busy month here, like it is at the elementary schools. Our eighth graders will welcome second-generation Holocaust speaker, Dan Ottenheimer, son of a Holocaust survivor, to Melikan on Monday, May eighth. All three grades will take their two math MCAS tests next week. We test over seventy groups at one time, including homeroom, small groups, and one-on-one scenarios. So it's all hands on deck. The following, our eighth graders will take their science, tech, engineering MCAS. Our eighth graders, um, our eighth grade French students will visit Se La Vie, thanks to support from our PTO on May twenty-fifth. And then on May twenty-sixth, as mentioned, our PTO is supporting, um, Totos Dance and Fitness Studio as they work with our, um, eighth grade Spanish or French students on Latin dance. So thank you again to our PTO for their continued support. Our eighth graders will also have an opportunity, May twenty-sixth, to speak with, um, high school students and advisors about sports and activities available to them next year. And then, once again, a reminder about our first ever fun run. Again, thank you to our PTO. June second, Megan Kelty signed me up for the Dunk Tank, I think. So I will have to sign somebody here up. And that is what I have.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's so exciting. It sounds like there's so much. It's nice to hear all the things that are happening in all the schools and everything. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, no. You, sorry, I stole your agenda item. I had a very upset sixth grader that it was all my fault that.
Cause she doesn't like it, but you like it.
No, she loves it, but there's changes and it's all my fault and I pushed her this and.
It's not your fault, Erin. It's not your fault, Erin. It's, it's, it's been really wonderful.
As you head into teenagers, your teenage years.
Everything will be your fault for a long time to come.
She's got a t-shirt, this is blame me, it's fine.
Yes, get used to it.
Yep, so I'm happy to hear that.
Yes, it's exciting. We're able to make it work.
Yeah. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you for joining. All right, um, we are moving on the agenda, uh, ELA and the math update.
And I will turn it over to Dr. Reinhardt.
Thank you. And I will welcome Kathy Lassad and Megan Kelty to join me. And Mary Coakley was going to join us as well, um, as she helps to support the middle school math, but she is at Nature's Classroom. Last I saw was a picture of dissecting sheep eyes. So she was really busy, yeah? So, um, uh, we will, uh, channel Mary as we get to the middle school work, so.
Please don't share that photo.
I, I won't.
See it popping up?
It's very cool. Okay. Um, so we're, we're really fortunate to have, um, Mary, Kathy, and Megan, um, helping to lead this work. And tonight, the goal is for us to just give you some updates about the work that's been happening both at the elementary and middle school level. Really not trying to comprehensively cover everything that we're doing, but to give you some highlights of some of the things that we've been really focusing on this year. As always, we, we often start with our strategic plan, our vision with our portrait of a graduate, and our strategic objectives around empowering learners and equity of opportunity. And these are really north stars for us. You know, it's, it's something we reference and we are guided by in our core values. And I think you'll see as we update you on the work that whether it's curriculum review, curriculum and instruction review, um, or digging deeper into existing work, we're always keeping this lens of empowering learners and equity of opportunity. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to get us started with math.
Sure. Um, so I'm just going to begin just to kind of ground the work that we're doing at the elementary school and the middle school with recognizing that math practice and instruction has changed over the past decade. And we've really moved from a focus on procedural fluency, which was really about just how to complete something, how to do the math, to a more balanced approach, which incorporates understanding why we do the math that we do. And that links in the procedural fluency, but also brings in some problem solving. So with the shift comes a shift in how we teach mathematics. And so on the next slide, these are, um, this is not something that's new. This came from a book, um, that the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics published in two thousand and fourteen. And they really looked at, um, research-based methods of teaching mathematics. So we're really honing in when we look at programs and resources that we put in front of teachers and we have our professional development with teachers, we're really honing in on these practices. What is it that we would want our teachers to be doing to get the most effective math for their students? And that includes, you know, focusing on tasks that involve reasoning and problem solving, making sure that our students are talking mathematics in their classroom. You'll see procedural fluency built in there. The difference here is instead of just understanding how to do something, you're understanding the why with conceptual understanding. Um, a focus on productive struggle, that math shouldn't just be something that students see once and understand. It should really be them thinking through and really problem and going deep into a task to understand, um, the different relationships within the math. And then lastly, using students' evidence of thinking. So having the students enter into the mathematics and teachers being able to use that thinking to guide them to their end goal of, you know, whatever mathematics concept they're teaching. So with that comes a shift in our, you know, our lesson structure. Before, it was very much what we used to call in education, I do, we do, you do. And the I do is where the teacher kind of just stands up in front of the class and shows the students what to do. Then the students have very similar problems that the teacher just did, where they practice with the teacher's guidance. And then they end off by doing some independent work on their own that kind of follows what that procedure is. But in order to get built in those more, um, effective math practices, we need to shift our lesson format to something that's more active for students, which is now we start with students kind of working together to solve problems. That brings in that opportunity for dialogue. It brings in that opportunity to elicit student thinking, um, that opportunity for, um, that conceptual understanding. And then from there, the students and teachers talk about the strategies and the different ways students approach problems. And then lastly, there is where the teacher comes in to kind of wrap it up and synthesize how it connects to their major, you know, objective of the day. So with that shift, we keep this in mind when we're deciding, you know, um, professional development that we're doing with teachers and, you know, resources that we're putting in front of teachers as well. So an update for elementary math is we're continuing to use Invisions, um, two thousand and twenty. And really, our focus is on that lesson structure and finding the best parts of the program to put in front of students. And we're using, um, what was already mentioned earlier was ST Math. So we had it for our first year this year. It stands for Spatial Temporal Mathematics. And it's based, um, in neuroscience of how students learn mathematics. So it's a real shift from other digital learning programs that are out there because they really ask the question, not how do we teach mathematics, but how do students learn math? And it's really about deepening that conceptual understanding in their ability to reason and make connections among math concepts. And they use what's called a perception-action cycle. And I'll show you on the next slide a little bit of what that means. And they really work from this visual to symbolic nature. It's there to enhance our core curriculum. So Invisions is, um, a high-quality instructional material. It's very language-heavy for a lot of students, though. So what ST Math does, it's a nice balance where there's no directions and no language on the ST Math program. So we'll, we'll show that to you. And then Stephanie later will talk about how we were awarded, um, a grant to help us fund, fund this. So the perception-action cycle is really the students start off on the screen on the left with the two ostriches, um, you know, what do you notice and what do you wonder? And that's all they see. They might just see an image. And they have to, with their mouse, scroll over and figure out what is it that I'm, I'm trying to solve here? So there's no directions given to them on what to do for each puzzle. And on the second slide, I intentionally made an error. So the ultimate, this game is literally called How Many Legs? So the student's job is to figure out how many legs are there. And it starts off very pictorial and they can see very visual how many legs there are. But if a student makes a mistake, like let's say, for example, they select the number five instead of four, it gives them automatic feedback immediately. So they can see how the shoes then matched to the legs and, oh, there was one too many. So every time they're doing it, they go through this cycle where they notice and wonder something. Then they predict what they think is going to happen and what they need to do. They test it by clicking on the green button. They watch the animation and then they get that immediate feedback so that they can make a correction instantly. Or if they're correct, they move on to the, you know, the next set in the puzzle. And then if we look at the next slide, it really moves from visual to symbolic. So this is what looks like in that top slide, one-to-one correspondence for students. They can just simply count each and every leg that's there. Each leg is visual. But as it progresses through, ST Math slowly starts to take out some of the visuals and add in some of that symbolic meaning there. So you'll start to see numbers added in. Eventually, you'll start to see operations added in. And then at the end of their objective, this was really, um, a puzzle about the order of operations in fifth grade, even though it started off as something significantly simpler. And it builds to that more complex understanding.
So that was fifth grade starts with the shoe thing?
So that was actually, that game in particular with the shoes probably starts off at a third grade level. Yep, so the third grader might have seen something like that.[1763.88] And it was with multiplication. But then as, when a fifth grader sees a puzzle, they might see something that looks similar to what they might have seen when they were learning multiplication. But now it's connecting to the Order of Operations. Yep, great question. So that is our update with elementary math. We're so excited to have this program again. If you, I don't know, can you slide back just a few because I just want to, I meant to introduce you to Gigi.
I was just gonna say-
Gigi is the thing.
And it was just his birthday.
Yes, it was just Gigi's birthday. We were celebrating Gigi the other day, so-
Is this the pen one?
Yes.
Oh, I was thinking like Proctor. I was like, oh, does somebody who went Proctor say that?
Yeah, no.
Well, we might use Proctor's pen one if we need to be.
Yeah, a little mask, they've got a mask on.
He might may get away around to other schools. But Gigi is really, the kids really have responded very positively to the program, teachers as well. When I've asked some kids in classrooms if they don't love it, it's generally because it's not automatic. It's not a, it's gamification, but the gamification is the math where typically a lot of kids are used to maybe doing some math and then the game part comes and it's really fun. The gamification here is the actual learning of the mathematics. So for some kids, that's just a shift to what they're used to. And, you know, things that might have seemed easy at one point now add a little struggle and, yeah. Great, thank you.
So at the middle school level, the introduction that Kathy gave about thinking about sort of the approach to mathematics, the effective practices, that is all part of the conversation we've been having at the middle school level as well. And over the last couple of years, we have been engaged in a curriculum and instruction review process at the middle school level where we've really been looking at what resources we have that we're currently using and defining our vision. We've used rubrics, both looking at, you know, a lot of the obvious things like alignment to the standards, but also teacher usability, student access, making sure we wouldn't be able to meet the needs of all learners, looking at ratings of different programs, so a whole range of different factors. And over the course of the last several years, we narrowed down our search. And then ultimately, this fall and into the winter, we were piloting one program, the Carnegie Math Program. At the same time, we continued to explore other options. We engaged in professional learning with Carnegie as we did this, knowing that that was an investment that could go beyond any resource. It was really just professional learning around mathematics. It related to productive struggle and to these effective math teaching practices. And then ultimately, made the, came to a consensus around moving forward with Carnegie as our resource that we'll be using starting in the fall. There are some teachers who continued the pilot throughout the year and so have been using Carnegie throughout this year, specifically at Melikan in the eighth grade. They have been working with Carnegie all year. So what I wanted to do from the middle school perspective is just give you a really very brief introduction to the Carnegie Learning Math Solution, which is their name for their program. And then there'll be lots of opportunities sort of to learn more about this as we go. So Carnegie is, has four guiding principles that I think are very telling about the program. They believe all students are capable of learning and that all students bring different perspectives to the work, that learning happens through doing. And so get back to that, we do as the launch of the lesson, giving kids a chance to dive in, bring what they know from their own context to the work. Learning through assessment is really the idea that as opposed to learning and then assessing that learning, that those two things are really always entangled, that you're learning as, it's learning for assessment, it's learning as assessment and that knowledge emerges over time. And finally, that education and learning is a human endeavor. So they're deeply invested in collaboration as a key component of how we learn mathematics, which again relates back to what Kathy talked about earlier, which is in the more traditional classroom, not that this never happens in a Carnegie-type setting, but that it really could be very individual that you sort of were told what you were going to do and then you put your head down and do it. And there's a really fundamental belief in the Carnegie approach that the collaboration and the talking and the struggling together and the learning to communicate your thinking is key to the learning. Carnegie has a blended approach. So there's the textbook lessons, which are where that collaboration and that piece I was just talking about happens, where those are the problems that elicit the problem-solving and the discussion and the analysis. Sometimes they're given solved problems and they're looking at them and saying, how, why was that right? Why was that wrong? Sort of all different types of experiences where they're working together. And then there's an online component called Mathia, which is where there is the more individualized opportunities for students. And it is adaptive software that follows the same arc of the mathematics as the textbook. But much like with ST Math, students progress at their own pace. And if they need more practice, the software will give them more practice in that area. If they have mastered it and demonstrate that mastery, it will move them on. And so it gives students an opportunity to move at different pace. And then those same concepts will come up in the learning together part, but they might not be at the same time. So there might be times when students do something ahead of time in Mathia and then get it again in class collaboratively or vice versa. And so that has, is, for, you're going to have some students who really love the learning together and you're going to have some students who really love the learning individually, but they're going to have both ways of interacting with the math.
So would Mathia be done in the classroom or is it more of like a homework?
Great question. It is in the classroom. It could also be homework, but it is meant to be a learning opportunity with the teacher interacting with students. So sometimes it will also happen at home. And I know our eighth grade teachers who have been using it this year will sometimes give some assignments. But it is also a classroom, they will have Mathia days or they might have parts of a class that are Mathia. And Carnegie always warns teachers, that's your busiest day because you're moving around and working with kids and they've got whiteboards out and paper out and they're working on things. And sometimes you're grouping kids together to work on something in Mathia. So that's a quick overview of kind of what Carnegie is all about. We do have professional learning that we're engaging in and we're starting next week. Our math teachers, our special educators, our ELD teachers and our ESPs, our educational support professionals who work in the math classes are all going to be engaged in professional learning next week. In addition, our math teachers will have another day of Carnegie professional learning on June 1st. And then we have some other built-in opportunities for them to continue that work. And then we'll be planning ongoing professional development to support them, including coaching from Carnegie consultants as we continue into next year. Pass it back to Megan.
So there's a lot to celebrate in-
Can I ask you just a question about the math?
Sure.
So thank you for addressing the kind of teacher education and development piece of it there. I think it's really, it's going to be really fascinating to see the development of this way of teaching math where students aren't just solving an equation. They're actually extracting the equation from a set of problems that are addressed to them. My only kind of question to the group is, given that that moves this really to a language-based kind of instructional platform, how are we then going to have our multilingual learners and/or English learners who are not at the same grade level of literacy stay at a similar or higher level of mathematical, you know, of understanding? So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, like, I like the move to the language-based because I think it does some things that strict equations don't do. But how then are we going to assist those other folks?
Great question. So there are a couple of things. One is that in Mathia, everything in the platform, like including kind of the directions and prompts, because unlike ST Math, there is a lot of language on the screen, can be translated to any lang-
Within the software?
Within the software.
Right.
So anything that Google Translate, any language Google Translate can do, it can do. And you can choose dialects and you can choose accents. I walked into a classroom early this year where one of our Melikan students, who was a newcomer from Ukraine, was doing Mathia in Ukrainian. And she could not yet communicate with me at that point in the year without using Google Translate, but she was doing the same math as her classmates.
She was pacing, she was pacing with her peers.
She was on this, yeah, she was, because she was doing it in her home language.
Great. I did not, I did not know that, I thought maybe this is another kind of event where we were putting the English language in front of the whole group and saying, this is what we've got.
So it will be more of a challenge on the textbook side, but you have these two components.
Yeah, okay.
So, and I would say for some of our students who maybe it's not a second language or a third language, but where language may be a barrier, that is something that we are working on and talking about. And one of the professional learning opportunities that we've already been working with Carnegie on is our special education team has already been meeting. Marie Allen is going to be part of the professional learning on May 9th. And we're going to have a Carnegie consultant with a special ed background working with us specifically on those access points and how we make sure that all learners have access. It does also do voice to text in Mathia, but again, doesn't solve everything when it comes to the textbook. But I will say that we looked at a lot of resources and they are all more language-heavy. So this is a barrier that we're going to grapple with every, with any resource. So we're really excited that the Mathia part, which is only one part of it, there are some built-in ways to remove that barrier.
Yeah, certainly no qualms with the transition to that, just really trying to make sure that-
Yeah.
And so I guess my follow-up is then, is testing available through the translation or is it only off of the textbook?
So the-
So when you go to assessment, testing assessment, whatever you want to use.
So Mathia provides data, skill by skill.
Okay.
So there would be feedback coming to you through that. The sort of more, the assessments that are built into the program that might be thought of as like kind of end of topic or end of module assessments are more paper-based. And there are some that are performance tasks and some that are more like paper-based and have more language. But we certainly would be able to think about like, well, how do we use Mathia? I think it's going to be some of the same questions that we're going to have to solve.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure they're not getting tested on their language skills.
Exactly, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Great questions.
Good for ELA. Okay. So there's a lot to celebrate in ELA. I have a few highlights to share. If you want to go to the next slide. So starting with the preschool this year, they have continued using the PELI Early Literacy Screener. And we were able to hold some data discussion meetings this year to talk about how to use that data to better instruct the preschoolers. We have continued in pre-K the implementation of the Focus Curriculum, Haggerty Phonyic Awareness. And also, we recently started sort of an emergent literacy series together this spring. And we'll continue that into the fall just to learn about the latest best practices in teaching emergent literacy and supporting that. In K to five, we've continued the use of the DIBELS 8 screener this year. We extended it all the way through grade five this year, fall, winter and spring. So spring testing will be coming soon. And we've also continued in grades K and one, the implementation of the Haggerty Phonyic Awareness. And in grades K through three, you may remember last year we had a big refresh of the Project Read Phonics curriculum materials. And we've continued that work this year. The biggest news in K through five this year is the recommendation to move ahead with Witten Wisdom as our core ELA curriculum starting in September. And we are currently in the midst of planning for professional development this month and next month. And I'll talk mostly about Witten Wisdom over the next few minutes. But don't want to leave out what's happening at Melikan here at six through eight. This year, we continued the use of the DIBELS 8 screener with all three grade levels. And we're able to hold meetings to analyze that data and to look more into students who need some additional support. So that's been real exciting work. So we'll dive into Witten Wisdom. So we could talk for a really long time about Witten Wisdom, but this is just a very brief introduction. So Witten Wisdom is intended to be, you can go to the next one. It's, Witten Wisdom is intended to be a curriculum for ELA for everything except for foundational skills. So when we think about teaching the act of decoding or spelling or the act of handwriting or typing, those are what we consider those more foundational skills. So Witten Wisdom is not designed to address those, but it's designed to address everything else. So when you think about studying comprehension or text analysis or genre or word choice or the creation of writing, drafting, revising, thinking about author's craft, those would be all of those other ELA types of standards that we're targeting in Witten Wisdom. So you see there just an image of some of the components of Witten Wisdom alongside our Haggerty Phonyic Awareness, a little logo or not a logo, but a letter from the Live Letters, which is still used at the beginning of kindergarten as an early phonics, letter sound instruction, and then our Project Read Phonics. So a little bit about Witten Wisdom, the design of it. Each grade level has four modules. So it is a knowledge-building curriculum. The idea of Witten Wisdom is that we are students in, you know, in a thematic experience, learning about certain topics. It is not intended to be a science curriculum or a social studies curriculum. It's intended to build background knowledge about a variety of topics through the humanities, the sciences, the arts. So each year, students will explore four modules. And these are just some samples of the topics. They're very high interest. You have first grade, some samples of world of books, creature features, powerful forces, Cinderella stories. A sample from fourth grade is a great heart, both cardiovascularly and sort of metaphorically, what makes a character have a great heart, extreme settings, the red coats are coming and myth-making. One thing that the Curriculum Council members really highlighted in our review of the materials was multiple access points to the content. So not only does Witten Wisdom come with dozens of real titles, of real trade book titles, which you saw in that beginning slide, but it also, students access through photographs, through audio, through video recordings and also through real artwork. So they're looking at, you know, artwork from some of it several hundred years old and they're, they're learning how to sort of observe that, how to reflect about it and how that can carry over to their reading and their writing and their comprehension about that and development about that. So the module design is based on the backwards design framework, which has been around in Northborough for many years as a way to organize our instruction. It's sort of, is based on the idea that you start, before you start teaching, you frame all of your learning around a question. That's not a yes/no question, but a question that really will engage students in deep thinking and raise the rigor of the work. And then all of the learning activities are planned sequentially so that by the end of the unit or the module, students will be able to really answer in depth that essential question using the knowledge that they've gained and, you know, through the synthesis that they've done in the learning. So just a couple of examples from the first grade. What can we discover about animals' unique features? How do people respond to the powerful force of the wind? A couple of samples in third grade, how do people learn about space and what is an artist? And so Witten Wisdom has some underlying focusing questions as well because if each module's about two months in length, you have some focusing questions to kind of dig a little bit deeper as you build that understanding. Another thing that really was appealing about Witten Wisdom to the Curriculum Council members was the embedded windows and mirrors throughout the curriculum. I've seen some presentations here in the past on the windows and mirrors work of the district and also many presentations about the SEL work in the district. And Witten Wisdom also, it's in, there are a lot of SEL principles embedded in terms of productive struggle and, you know, self-reflection and developing empathy. And it just, it seemed like there were a lot of ties between Witten Wisdom to a lot of our, to a lot of our values that we already have in place here in terms of the windows and mirrors, the SEL, the backwards design, really raising the rigor of student work and having multiple access points for all learners so that all learners are working with grade-level content in ELA. And before, before I conclude, I just want to say that the Curriculum Council that really took on this work this year should, you know, receive some applause for the work that they did. It was a council of about 15 people come- It was a council of about fifteen people comprised of classroom teachers, student support teachers, English language development teachers, reading specialists, principals. Stephanie and I were, were there, and it was a large undertaking to really start with the resources that the Department of Education had curated in the area of ELA, and to really develop an instructional vision together, using the district parameters and priorities to deeply investigate the various resources, using rubrics and really get really detailed evidence gathering tools, and then group analysis of that, and coming to consensus. And so, just to think that curriculum council and all of their work, it was a lot, and now here we are. So it's a very exciting time as we move ahead with this, and I think that's.
Do you want to say just a few words about the professional learning that's planned? Just because I knew that, I'm guessing that would be a question?
Yeah, and I wasn't sure if that would steal your thunder, so.
Go right ahead.
So on May ninth, we have seven consultants coming in from Great Minds, which is the, the publishing company of, of Witten Wisdom. And we will have one consultant visiting each of our elementaries, so four in Northborough. And the first session of the PD series is called Launch, and it will be five and a half hours of really just a very comprehensive introduction to Witten Wisdom. And a lot of participants will be there, we, similar to the Carnegie Math, we have classroom teachers, student support teachers, ELD teachers, reading specialists, principals, SLPs, ESPs, SLPA's, library media specialists. Yes, some behavior specialists will be attending because of, you know, supporting, there are students throughout the school day, who am I forgetting?
School psychologists.
School psychologists.
They're involved in testing and assessment.
Anyone else? That will be, that will be May ninth, and then we also will have a second session, which is called Module and Lesson Study, which will really dive much deeper into how do we actually, you know, now we understand the why and how of this curriculum, the design, and the overall goals, and, and the evidence base that it's designed upon, but how do I actually teach it? You know, how do I plan for when I have a group of students in front of me? How do I, how do I provision, how do I, how do I assess, how do I, how do I use this on a day to day basis? So that's what will be the Module and Lesson Study Day of training, and that will be more of a staggered approach in June, where we have several consultants booked already, and we will offer trainings to classroom teachers, student support teachers, teachers who will really be putting together those lessons for students on a daily basis, in smaller, in smaller sessions throughout the month of June. Do you want to add anything?
And then going into next year, the, a lot of the professional learning will be embedded in professional development days, faculty meetings, professional learning community that are built into the schedule. And that is really the recommendation of Great Minds, is that once we've done these first two days, that we are really, it's a lot of internal support and collaborative planning and collaborative work in that first year. And then there's another series of professional learning opportunities, but they don't recommend sort of doing too much right up front, but like letting, you know, letting people get into it. And so we're budgeting for and planning for those would be the year after. So, and will, I, I guess I can explain the grant now, or?
Yeah, so on the, in the superintendent report section, there are two grants connected to the presentations that you just heard. One is the approval of the accelerated literacy learning through high quality instructional materials and approval of the ST Math grant. So it might be wise just to speak to those now in terms of the grants.
While we have you at the table.
Yeah.
And then we can just vote.
So since we're talking about literacy, I'll just explain the literacy grant, and then, and then we'll go on to explaining the ST Math grant. The literacy grant is, so first of all, Kathy and Megan have participated in a network that DSE, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education facilitates, about doing rigorous selection and evaluation processes. And have been bringing back lots of excellent ideas and knowledge to help guide us in these processes, and it's informed our middle school math process in addition to theirs. So really grateful for their participation in that. It also, I think, definitely helped us in getting this grant. It pays for one hundred percent of the material, no, one hundred percent of the professional development that we complete by June thirtieth, which is why we're working really hard to get two days worth for every teacher done before June thirtieth. And then it pays for fifty percent of the materials purchased by June thirtieth. So we worked closely with Becky Calabrino and are able to match, using FY twenty-three money, we are able to match the grant money, and we will be able to get all of our startup materials for this grant, and through this grant for the coming year. We, the, the ELA curriculum, obviously we've talked about this is very expensive, it is very much an upfront first year cost. When you get past the first year, and you have bought all of those trade books, and all of those teacher manuals, and all of the sort of printed materials, the consumables are very much in line with what we've always, you know, sort of with our sort of budget. And it'll be something that we can work into our operating budget.
Sure, the ST Math grant is from the Mass STEM one eight foundation, and it was seven separate grants that we had to write for each of the elementary schools between Northborough and Southborough. So it included lots of collaboration with principals and math leaders at each building, and they played a huge role, because what they were really looking for was, the first part of the grant, Stephanie and I kind of took the lead on, because we could talk about all the district work we've done this year with ST Math, and then they really wanted to see how it was going to be individualized for each school. And that's really where the principals and the math leaders stepped up and, and added a lot to our step to the process. So a huge thank you to each of, each of them for, for helping with that. The grant allows us to secure ST Math for three years at a cost of three thousand five hundred dollars per elementary school, which is a significantly reduced cost from if you were just to get it for, you know, purchase it on your own. With that comes what they call an education success manager, so it's kind of our own one-on-one support person who comes, there's also professional development, let me jump ahead for that before I explain her. She, it comes with professional development, so three times a year, the teachers will, will have it, the first being on one of the three days before school starts, you'll have, and then again, like the other, one of the things people are realizing is embedded professional development is the way to go. So it will be at staff meetings or professional learning team meetings throughout the school year. So the educational success manager is kind of our point person, who will help us, you know, look at the data, find actionable steps for that data, and really make sure that. Our goal with the ST Math was making sure that we are giving every student grade level access to math curriculum materials, because of a lot of those language barriers and other barriers that may exist in a regular program. ST Math really takes those away, and so that educational success manager really helps us kind of dive deep into that work, and provide us with the professional development that we, you know, do our work for.
What happened after three years?
Is that something that we get into operational with it?
Yeah. And I mean, those are things that as we have been doing this, we've been planning for what is, you know, what is the cost right now, what is the past and the future, and how are we working towards? We don't want to get ourselves into a situation where we do pay for something with the grant and then can't sustain it. So that's something we work really closely with Becky, and making sure that we are planning forward for that, and feel comfortable.
And there is a currently an ELA budget, and we have like a free budget, we are spending money on ELA curriculum materials. So it is, we've been offset from what we traditionally would spend, shifting that to Witten Wisdom, shifting what we spend on that to some of these new programs.
And I just wanted to say, and there might be some questions, but there was already a little bit of mention, but this, there's a lot that's happening with our principals, with our teachers in making these decisions, but in doing the professional learning. And there's just a tremendous amount of work that our educators are putting into all of this work. Incredibly grateful to Megan and Kathy and Mary in the leadership they're providing, and unbelievable amounts of work that they're each putting into it. But also our principals, our teachers, they've got lots of work ahead, and they've already put in lots of work, so we just wanted to make sure that we really acknowledge that.
I have some questions, I don't do this. So my question is, this is all the same, this is going to be the Witten, the Witten Wisdom is going to be the same at all the schools. What about the support things, you know, lively letters, all this stuff? Is that the same at all schools? Because I just found out this week, I was shocked that like Proctor does for kindergarten lively letters, and I was talking to somebody, I think it was at Lively Letters, and they're like, oh, we don't, we, our kindergarten has never done that before, or, or maybe it was, maybe it was, I can't remember. But whatever it was, I was like surprised that like all kindergartens in Northborough aren't doing the same thing.
The lively letters is in the scope and sequence for all of kindergarten in Northborough, so it is part of the kindergarten experience. It, it happens in the first few months of the year before the, before the Project Read Phonics starts.
People may not always necessarily know the names for some of the things that are happening.
So Megan's mentioned lively letters, Haggerty, those are the foundational programs that are our curriculum.
So what's happening at the Peaslee School is going to be the same at the Proctor, and then, and then so the curriculum, because this is new curriculum for teachers, right? They basically kind of throw out what they've done before, and they're starting all, so they're all going to be starting the same.
Well, the Project Read Haggerty and Lively Letters, one of the things that's really nice is that's, we've been working on.
Yeah.
So that gets to stay the same. The, there's a lot of work happening around, we always talk about, we can't keep adding. We also have to take things away. And so we are doing a lot of work, talking explicitly about what are some of the things we're letting go of to make space for what we're bringing in. So yes, there are some things that people will be letting go of in terms of the way they've been teaching reading and writing, and now they will have this integrated Witten Wisdom piece for that, that will be consistent across the schools. Joan, do you have anything?
I certainly do, thank you Kelly.
You're welcome.
I have two questions, first of all, I'd like to thank Kathy and Megan for the presentation tonight, and for Stephanie also, and for anyone who was involved in writing these very worthwhile and very generous grants, which are, which definitely help us instituting these two programs. Kathy, I have a question for you about the ST Math. I was looking in Greg's, you know, superintendent's letter to us, and he mentioned that this supports our core curriculum, which is Envision.
Correct.
So if I was a parent and I came in and I heard this presentation, but I know my child is still doing Envision, if ST Math is supplementary, what part of the week of a five day class schedule would my son or daughter be doing the ST Math? Is that a daily supplement?
Sure, that's a great question. Yep, so typically our math blocks are seventy-five minutes at each school, at each elementary school, and Envision lessons run about sixty minutes. So there's that fifteen additional minutes, and sometimes, in the past, if ST Math was not present, they might have been using a different digital learning tool. It could be something like supplementary number talks or other pieces that they would fill in. ST Math's recommendation is for K and one, sixty minutes per week, which averages to about twelve minutes per day. And then for grades two to five, it's ninety minutes a week, which averages to eighteen minutes a day. But what we're finding with our data this year is students will finish their grade level journey, many students will finish their grade level journey without reaching that time limit. So we're asking really ten minutes a day for K and one next year, and fifteen minutes a day. So for some teachers, it might be, if you walk in their classroom, they might utilize it as a station within their math block. So you'll see Envisions happening, but you'll also see ST Math happening. Some teachers utilized it where they taught their Envisions lesson, and then the last fifteen minutes, or ten or fifteen minutes, they would have all students on at the same time. Others didn't always have it connected with their math block, so they might have their seventy-five minute math block, but they used it as morning work. The goal was really to ensure that all of our students were able to get on it, so we had to have some flexibility in terms of when students, I'm sorry, when teachers scheduled it in their day, because of different services that certain students receive, and when they're pulled out of, you know, certain times of their day. So it, it might vary when you walk into teachers' classrooms, but on average, it should be ten to fifteen minutes a day at most.
Does that take any time away from the, what, let's say, three years ago, what an Envision block of math instruction would look like? Because now you're taking, you have an extra ten minutes. Did you add another ten minutes to the block the teachers have to teach math, or is it sort of still into that same time element?
I think two things have occurred, one, we did increase the math time from, I believe it was a sixty minute recommendation in the past, to a seventy-five minute.
Okay.
But the second piece is, Envisions, we are now in year eight, I believe, of Envisions. When you start a new program, it takes you time, the lessons generally take longer as the teacher becomes more comfortable with the format of the lessons and the programming. I think at this point, where many of our teachers are veteran teachers that are experienced with Envisions, they're able to select the best pieces of the Envision lesson to get that down to a sixty to seventy minute math block, if that makes sense, what I'm saying there. So what might have taken them seven or eight years to do in a longer period of time, I think teachers are able to, the more they're familiar with the program, be more selective with what it is that they're using, and match those resources with their students' needs better. So I think it's twofold, we added a bit of time to it, but I think many teachers are also more efficient with their Envision lessons and what they need to complete for the students.
Well, thank you very much, you're very knowledgeable, and you answered my question right on. I was glad to see that you did say, well, we're still going to keep it to sixty minutes, and we're going to cram this in and do something supplemental. I'm glad to see that in this school schedule of the day, that we have, that, you know, with administration, that you have added on an extra fifteen minutes. You know, to allow both of these programs to work, and one is not being hindered by the other. Kathy, thank you very much. Megan, I have a question for you, okay? I am very pleased to see what you're doing and the forefront and the way you're going, and, and, and that our district is adopting one of the programs that is being endorsed by the Commissioner of Elementary Education with the state of Massachusetts. I'm really, I think it's a great idea that you have this elementary ELA curriculum council. I hope that it is not something like when we would have in the past, you'd have a textbook committee that would look at different, you know, GIN or Hoot Mifflin, and, and you adopt a series and then that committee goes away. Is this committee going to be staying, that you have this curriculum council, is it going to be staying in place so that as you go forward, and as you have this new program, that you're going to be meeting with these teachers, and teachers that have, may have questions in the beginning, they may not have any when the consultants are there, but come in December or January of 2024, when they do have a question or a concern, and something's not working in the program? Can they come back to a member of the curriculum council and say, I need assistance, I need a mentor to come in and see what I can do better to get this lesson across to the students?
Yeah, we, we already have those plans in motion, so we will be maintaining a council and opening it up to other volunteers to join the work, and renaming the council a little bit. So we're changing it from Curriculum Council to Implementation Council. So starting in the fall, and actually, we'll probably do a little bit of summer work as well, but yes, there, there are plans in the works for that. It will be our Implementation Council, and we are moving ahead with that. And similar to the Curriculum Council, hopefully having representation from multiple roles in the district.
Okay, and I, and Megan, thank you very much for explaining the other programs that you are also implementing with the Dibbles and with the Project Read. Is this program going to be available to all students in our district, no matter of their ability, their intextual abilities, or their language efficiencies?
Yes, which is one of the reasons we were so drawn to the multiple access points in Witten Wisdom, and there are, I didn't mention it in the presentation, but there are also multilingual resource guides that come with every single grade level. that come with every single grade level, uh, that give very specific, uh, suggestions, uh, pertaining to the, the modules of study in each grade level. But yes, the idea is that it is providing access for all students to rigorous grade level, um, ELA content and engaging all students in that, in that work and collaboration.
And I'll just.
And how?
Sorry, Joan, I was just gonna add that, um, in our, um, both the ordering of materials, but also in the professional learning, our Student Support Services Assistant Directors are going to be at the professional learning. And in addition, um, the special educators and ESPs who work in our, um, specialized programs, such as our Castle Program, our, um, TLP Program, they are all also going to be part of the professional learning so that they, um, understand the program and are able to, um, modify and make connections, um, for all students where possible.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, uh, Kelly, is, um, how is this being communicated to the parents and if parents have questions about it? I know that Greg through his superintendent's letter does a great detailed information on these programs. And I'm sure Stephanie through your communication and Kathy and Megan's. But is there gonna be any orientation for parents that they can come in and look at the materials? Or you can explain this to them along with Rhoda Webb, who is, you know, uh, our great linguist specialist?
So I can start, if you have anything to add. I know we have a meeting actually, um, for the math, middle school math leaders tomorrow, actually. Um, and one of our to- top agenda item is about communication and how we talk about the new program. Um, and on the agenda is talking about things like, do we want to have, um, you know, what are the opportunities for a math night for parents to learn about the program? And I think, uh, the Implementation Council, those are, will be among the topics that we will be taking on is planning for how we bring parents into this work and provide opportunities for them to learn about the program. So that is definitely future work that we'll be taking on.
Thank you. And I think that math night is a wonderful thing, because I attended one in Peaslee several years ago. And I was, it knocked my socks off. I thought it was just a wonderful evening. And the enthusiasm of the kids teaching their parents, some of the tools and some of the games and the activities they go through was so worthwhile. It was really wonderful.
Yeah, that was fun. That was the Tang math.
Which I think is most important, because parents today are very involved with their students and the education. So thank you very much.
So just, um, and I know, I think, and this is a superintendent advisory meeting that I, I talked to you and I mentioned about, um, things like Epic and, um. Lexia. And so are we still figuring out those? Is that right?
Uh, yes. So we're, you, sorry, the question is like, well, the.
Yeah, like how is that gonna play in? Are we, because I know, um, one of the things with the Wit and Wisdom is like they had like, um, uh, reading books and stuff that kids can access.
Yes. So we are evaluating the various digital platforms that we have access to, to figure out which ones. I mean, there are some, like Lexio, we have a multi-year license that, uh, doesn't expire this year. So there's really nothing that we have to worry about there. We will still have access to Lexia. It will be more of a conversation of where does that fit? How does that get used? Um, but we are evaluating all of the different licenses we have and asking those questions and, um, being able to think about, again, that what do we have to take off the plate so there's room on the plate for the pieces we're introducing?
Yeah. And I mentioned it at one of the meetings too also is that during COVID, how you could have access of like the Epic books at home? Like that was such like a great thing, like the kids loved it, but it's only available during like, you know, nine to three, like only during school hours. And I wish there was more that they could expand, you know, for more digital, digital options at home too for kids. That'd be great. Uh, are we? Thank you guys so much. Thank you all. Thank your whole team. Thank you teachers who are ready to jump into this new exciting time ahead of us for next year and the summer and all the training and.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, we have an update for principal search process.
Sure. So as the committee is aware, we are saying goodbye to two of our Northborough Elementary Principals, Alana Seer and Jennifer Wright. Um, I think that they are, um, moving on for new opportunities and wish them well and are grateful for their, their years, years of service. Um, as a result, we're in the process of, um, searching for the next principals of the Proctor and Lincoln Street Schools. Um, and we are forming a search committee, um, to find the next great principals of those two schools. Um, so the search committee will consist of parents, um, teachers, central office leaders, um, key stakeholders. And they'll be responsible for, um, vetting the interview questions, interviewing candidates and making recommendations for, um, finalists, um, for the super, for me to, um, kind of vet and take the next level of, um, the interview process. I will say, say that we are, um, very fortunate to have an amazing district. Um, and that we are a very attractive district, um, to candidates. Um, we are well-resourced. We have wonderful students. We have amazing supportive families. Um, and I have no doubt that although, um, difficult shoes to fill, um, it is an opportunity to look at, um, the next set of leaders for Northborough at Lincoln Street and Proctor School. So more information will be shared. Um, Stephanie Ryan, Dr. Reinhorn and Heather Richards will be co-facilitating the search process. Now you can assure that, um, you know, educators, families, the school committee, that there'll be many opportunities for feedback and input on the candidates. So if you are not selected to be a part of the search committee process, there will be forums. There will be a lot of opportunities to engage and provide input and feedback.
Great. Yes, this is a, a new trial that we're doing, testing, um, doing search for two at once, so.
Yeah, so we, we have had two openings, two principal openings in the past. And what we found that the same candidates were competing for the same positions that were open. So we're trying to be efficient with our time. And I think this is one way that we're doing, doing.
Thank you. Any questions? There are no beeps. Uh, we are going to legislative update.
So just a quick update on the budget process. So the state, uh, budget process is, is still moving forward. So the House budget, um, was set, um, and now the Senate is working on its budget. Um, there is some positive, um, rumblings in the Senate budget on a couple of items. The first is the minimum, um, state aid amount is raised from thirty dollars to sixty dollars per student, which is helpful to the community of Northborough. Also at the regional level, uh, regional transportation reimbursement is at a hundred percent, um, of the Senate budget, which is a first, um, which does have an impact on the Northborough budget. And lastly, um, it looks like the Senate budget does include, uh, the continuation of universal free meals for, um, next year. And it looks like, uh, for three, two years, which is very exciting. Um, the next step in the process is for the Senate budget to be debated. And then it goes into conference committee and then eventually is provided to the government with approval. So we are, um, thinking that we won't know the governor's budget. Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, probably until early June. But I think it, it shouldn't impact, it won't impact the appropriated approved budget that, uh, the town sort of approved at the time.
Speaking of town meeting.
So town meeting recap. So, um, again, wanna thank the citizens of Northborough for supporting the pre-K through eight, um, school budget. So again, um, it's great to have an approved budget. It was a four point nine percent, which has been more than a percent increase than we've asked for in the past several years. Um, so we're very thankful, um, and we are eager to get started. And as we are winding down fiscal year twenty-three, the Finance Department is gearing up for fiscal year twenty-four. So for the next several months, they'll be, um, they'll be in two fiscal years. Um, but again, just wanna extend, um, our thanks to the citizens and the voters. And, um, having a, an approved budget allows us to, and just wanna thank the school committee for its support and also the Finance Department and all of the key stakeholders who are engaged in the budget process.
I wanna thank them also for the Z School.
Yes.
We got that warrant article approved too. So we can do the much improved, um, events that need to be happening there. And, um, I wanna just thank all the residents who came out and were speaking at the microphones on behalf of the school, um, district and saying how much that we do need and, um, you know, why are we debating other things when we need things for the school? So thank you very much. Please consider coming to meetings.
Yes.
Helping us.
Can we pass on class?
And.
Yes.
And on a regional level.
And the Northborough community also, um, passed its portion of the, uh, assessment for the regional school district. And also, um, approved the indebtedness to move forward with the athletic complex project, which is very exciting. So overall, a successful annual town meeting from a school district perspective.
It was. Uh, we are gonna move on to school choice vote. Um, we had a presentation last month and there was no comments or anything from public, um, hearing tonight. Um, do we have a specific motion that we need to?
Yes, I'll just make a, a, just a recommendation to the school committee. So, um, again, the school committee is required, um, to withdraw from school choice if it does not want to participate. If no vote is taken, we wouldn't be participating in school choice for next year. So my recommendation to the school committee is to withdraw from school choice for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year for the reasons that the per pupil expenditure reimbursement that we, we receive for each school choice student is far below the actual cost of educating Northborough student. Um, acceptance is random, so, um, we're required to take, um, a student required, uh, regardless of whether the student has a significant discipline record or not. Um, how our current enrollment and, uh, how their elementary school, middle school, um, is in a healthy place. And I don't think, um, this whole case would be putting on any use to the result. And for those reasons, I recommend that we resolve, um, school choice.
So can I make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, based on the understanding, so what school choice is that Northborough K through eight, or is this Northborough, Northborough K through eight, remove itself from the school choice list? Withdraw from the school choice? Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, school year?
Motioned by Bryce, seconded by, um, Erin. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Um, it will be a roll call vote. Um, Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. So unanimously we pass to withdraw from the school choice for, um, the academic year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Uh, we're going on to approval of grants. So we mentioned a few of them and we've got a few other ones.
So we do have a thousand dollar donation from Capo Bianco Law. So this is not the first time that they have donated money to our school lunch program, so we are very grateful. Um, so I know that Mr. Boy, uh, Mr. Parsons are working on, um, looking at capital projects that we're hoping to move forward. Um, and this thousand dollar donation will go to, um, a capital project that, um, we're looking forward to.
Yep. That's exciting.
I move to approve the donation in the amount of a thousand dollars from Capo Bianco Law PC to the school lunch program.
Second.
Motioned by Erin, seconded by Bryce. Um, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, roll call vote, Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And myself as a yes unanimously passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, um, Capo Bianco Law. Um, we appreciate your continuous support in the Northborough schools. Thank you.
So next, we've been, uh, engaged in negotiations with Northborough Teachers Association, um, Unit A, the Northborough Teachers Association, ESP Unit C, and, uh, Northborough School Custodians. So it has been a tremendous amount of work over the past eight months, um, for our finance team and our HR team. So just wanna thank, um, Becky Pellegrino and Heather Richards for their leadership around this task and also, also the school committee. We've had, uh, very successful negotiations and I would characterize them as collegial, professional and very productive. I think we are leaving negotiations, um, with strong labor relations, which is always a positive. Um, so this evening, um, we have, um, three, uh, uh, agreements for the school committee to approve for Unit A, uh, Unit C and the custodians. And I believe, um, Heather Richards provided you with, uh, motions for each of those.
So if it's okay, I'll just go ahead with the motions. So I make a motion as presented to the school committee, the Northborough School Committee and the Northborough Teachers Association, hereby agree to a three-year contract to be in effect as of the first day of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year and will continue in effect to and including the day prior to the start of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year.
Second.
Motioned by Bryce, seconded by Erin. Uh, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, roll call vote, Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself as a yes unanimously passes. Who unanimously passes? Thank you.
Okay, I motion as presented to the school committee, the Northborough School Committee and the Northborough Teachers Association, ESP Unit C, administrative assistants, aides and food service team members, cafeteria workers, hereby agree to a new three-year contract to be in effect from the first day of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. This agreement is subject to a few minor continued points of discussion with the association. We would revisit with the school committee should there be any substantive changes.
Second.
Motioned by Bryce, seconded by Erin. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself as a yes unanimously passes. I also wanna thank all of the, um, custodians, cafeteria workers, ESP workers, um, Unit A, Unit C and everybody, messes, um, the people who work in our district. Thank you so much. We couldn't be here if it weren't for all of you. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Old business, none at this time. Superintendent's report to the committee, enrollments.
So in your packet is the enrollment report. Um, as of April eighteenth, we had one thousand six hundred eighteen students. Um, no, no change from the last time I was started in, um, in March. Um, also in your packet is the FY twenty-three monthly general fund expenditure report and Becky will provide that reference.
So good evening. The Northborough operational budget as of April thirtieth has a balance of one hundred and seven thousand forty-seven dollars or point four zero percent of the operational budget. We continue to trend very closely with fiscal year twenty twenty-two where we had a balance of forty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars or point one nine percent. There have been no substantial changes, um, in budget lines from March to April. Um, you will notice that our tuition out special education line has decreased a bit and that is due to a change in placement for one of our students. However, um, we will expect to see an offset in that line, um, as we receive more information about the student transitioning from one placement to another. Um, one big event in the fiscal year is this Friday marks the final day to enter fiscal year twenty twenty-three purchase orders into the system. Um, with the exception obviously of any emergency purchases. Um, so as Greg said, we are starting to transition out of FY twenty twenty-three and into twenty twenty-four. I can't believe it. And I already opened a budget folder for twenty twenty-five.
Dangerous. And we're not gonna have emergencies.
No rest of the year. Um, well, I have a question. Can we, um, Well, I have a question. Can we, Bryce had to step out for a moment. Can we, because we still have three, can we still vote without him, or should we move on and then motion?
Why don't we move on, and then we'll come back?
And then we'll come back and do the motions. Okay.
So, so the next item for the superintendent's report is approval of grants. So we, we did receive a lot of money through exceptional grant writing. So Kathy Lozot, Megan, and Dr. Reinhorn, and Becky and the finance team, there's been a tremendous amount of effort seeking grant funding, and there's been great success, which is exciting. So one of the grants that we received was a genocide education grant, so I thought Dr. Reinhorn could provide a brief overview of that grant.
Sure. The genocide education grant is the funding to support the legislation that was passed when Governor Baker was still in office that requires middle and high schools to provide genocide education and provide support around what that means and frameworks that we can use. And we are fortunate to be working with our colleagues in Southborough on this, and in addition to from the region, from the high school. So our department head, Brittany Burns, who is, who is often sought after to work with other districts, has been leading some of the professional development for our middle school teachers as we do this work. This involves our social studies teachers as well as our ELA teachers, because this work bridges across those two departments. And the grant is paying for stipends for teachers, for some of the work that they're doing, for the professional learning opportunities. It is a two-year grant, although the money you're looking at right now is just the first year, and will also help pay for supplies if we need new books and things. It also pays for survivor visits. Michelle mentioned earlier about the Holocaust, second generation Holocaust survivors. Those are paid for by the grant. So it's again, funding a lot of hard work that teachers are digging into.
Great. And then, since you mentioned twenty-five, so then this is a two-year, and then afterwards, the?
Yeah, I mean, other than, the survivor visits are something we were doing before, and we will continue to work into our operating budget. It's nice to have, sometimes these things give us relief from things that we would have done anyway. But a lot of what this grant is paying for is revisiting curriculum, reworking things that is not an ongoing cost. It's giving us a boost to get some work done and to really honor teachers' time and pay them for their time to do some of that updating of curriculum, professional learning, to be able to pay them to really learn these frameworks. But it's not a future cost that we'll need to work into the operating budget.
Just have a quick question.
Yeah.
So the, the grant is not only applicable to Holocaust education, and it's genocide education across the board. And so when we talk about survivor visits, we can talk about survivor visits from several of these episodes that have occurred.
Yes, so for example, we again work together with the high school and with Southborough. The survivor visits that are happening at the high school this year are from the Bosnian genocide.
Yep.
So we do look at having varying opportunities. And if we look at the curriculum integration, this is going well beyond looking at just Holocaust, and it's looking at all the stages of genocide. And really, the middle school is focusing on the early stages. And it then queues the students up so that when they get to the high school, the high school is, is looking more at the later stages, and they're looking. So at the middle school level, we actually don't, the, the ELA side does more with the Holocaust, and our history teachers in middle school are doing more with other examples of genocide in the curriculum.
Is it six, seventh, and eighth, or is it just seventh, eighth? What is it?
It's, there are some pieces that are being threaded throughout the three grades. And that's part of what the collaboration is, is that they're working out sort of which pieces are being done in different places, and they're all using a consistent research-based framework that explains the stages of genocide.
Yeah, I was just, I guess my, my question was in an effort to expand what that word immediately kind of conjures for most folks in these communities. That, you know, that has taken place here on the land that we live on.
Yeah, and that is, yeah.
You know, other, other areas of the world at different times. So, yeah.
Yeah, that is exactly right.
So that's very exciting and important work. And I will say that the money that we received is significant. So it will, will allow us to provide teachers with time, but also allow us to curate a number of resources for years to come. So also, we have, as we heard this evening about the literacy changes that will be taking place next year, the approval of the accelerated literacy learning through high-quality instructional materials grants in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And then we also have the approval of the ST Math School Grants Program, which is equivalent to around forty thousand dollars. So all very exciting grants that we're receiving, but do require a vote of the committee.
Will you accept a motion for all of them at once?
Well, first, we have to vote the budget.
Oh, I thought maybe you got a quorum.
No, I know. That's what I was thinking. I was like, well, we'll wait, we'll wait for you. So we'll do the budget, and then as long as you read each one, we can do a, so then we.
Let's do this.
Roll call thing. Just one clarifying thing. So in the letter, it's thirty-one thousand, and here it's eighteen. It's because we have to approve this year and then next year, or what?
No, that is actually because the letter.
Southborough and Northborough.
Is Northborough and Southborough.
So this eighteen thousand would be split?
Sixty percent of the total grant.
Of the thirty-one.
Of the thirty-one.
That's ours, net sum.
That's ours, and this is for two years. We don't have to like.
No, there's an additional amount you'll be approving next year.
Next year for it. Okay, so this is just for this year.
This is just for this year.
Okay.
All right, so I make a motion to accept the general, the FY twenty-three monthly general fund expenditure report.
Until audited.
Until audited.
Motion by Bryce.
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any discussion? None. Roll call vote. Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself as a yes unanimously pass.
Let me do the votes.
Yeah, you want to do it?
All right, here we go.
All right, I make a motion to approve the genocide education grant in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, as well as approval of the accelerating literacy learning through high-quality instruction materials grant in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred dollars, and the approval of the ST Math School Grants Program from Massachusetts funded by the One Eight Foundation in the amount of over forty thousand for licensing, implementation, professional development, and support fees over the three-year term.
Second.
Motioned by Erin, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself as a yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all who have been searching out these grants, writing them. Kudos to the team. School committee member reports. Bryce, anything?
Well, this is just kind of calling myself out here.
You do it.
You know, I, I guess I just want to, want to say that as a member of NSPAC, I have not been able to attend many, or any of the, the get-togethers just due to time constraints on my end. That has shifted, and I very much am looking forward to being able to report out from NSPAC. So apologies, I have not been able to be there, but I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. So from the Wellness Committee, this is Wellness Week. So today was Walk to School for this, all of the schools, which I know many participated in, and splitting perennials with the garden club. Tomorrow night is yoga on the common, on the Northborough Common, and if it is raining, it will be moved to the Z School Gym at five thirty.
What time is that? That's at five thirty?
Five thirty, yep. Tomorrow is also Make a Fruit Saber at the Northborough Library at four, Grilling Safety at the Southborough Library at four, Learn to Play Chess at the Southborough Library at five. Also coming up this week is the Moon Hike on Friday, the Bike Rodeo on Saturday, and Family Yoga on the Trails on Sunday. The Junior Women's Club has donated a bike to raffle for anyone who participates in Wellness Week activities. And there are other fun prizes being raffled off too. And then Policy Subcommittee is meeting on Monday. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much. For NSPAC, Going the Distance Awards is going to be May eleventh at six PM at the Algonquin High School Cafeteria. It is on my calendar. I'm very excited. It's, it's a great event. It's so nice to see it all every year, and I'm so excited to have it back again. Last year was great, coming back after a little hiatus. And then on Wednesday, May thirty-first, they will have at nine thirty at the Northborough Library, they will have their NSPAC General Meeting, and they will include the annual officers' election. So if you are available, you can go. And you can find out all their great information on the nspac.org. Joan, do you have anything?
I, no, I don't have anything. You know, my report from the NEF was done at the beginning through their presentation, so I have nothing else to report tonight.
So I just have one item, and that is on May twelfth is International Night. So our multilingual department will be hosting International Night. It's at six o'clock at Algonquin Regional High School. So we welcome school committee members to attend. It's a wonderful event. And.
The twelfth?
Friday, the twelfth. So if you don't have a busy week, now you, now you do.
We do.
Oh my goodness, that's next week, all these dates. It's crazy. Oh my goodness, we're in May.
It's a policy Monday night.
Policy, yep, policy Monday.
The Southborough School Committee meeting on Wednesday.
Wednesday. Oh, Tuesday, I will make an announcement, is PD Day. Just for those who, reminder, it's Election Day, and so there is no school. Kids do not go to school on Tuesday. Teachers will be there.
That has like kind of flown, flown under the radar a bit.
It is. I feel like it kind of like.
I'll make the announcement this Friday.
Yeah, yeah. So I know for me too, I was like, oh, wait. My husband's not working from home anymore. I need to figure this out. So, educational policy, none at this time. Policy development or distribution, we have none at this time. Personnel items, distribution of personnel report.
So in your packet is the personnel report of May third. And as you can imagine, at this time of year, things typically are more quiet. But I know that the HR department and the finance department are gearing up for the hiring season, so that is well underway for the upcoming school year.
Communications, none at this time. Actions on minutes, we need a motion to approve the open meeting minutes of April third.
I make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes of April third, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Bryce?
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any discussion? No discussion. It'll be a roll call vote. Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
I was doing, I was abstaining.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself as a yes. So we have three yeses and one abstention by Erin. So it passes. Thank you so much. Future agenda items. June is gonna be another celebration month. We're gonna have.
More cake.
More cake. So here, I'm telling you people, come to the meeting in June. We have a big cake for you all. So come. We're gonna recognize the retirees. We are also going to have election of officers, as we mentioned. Erin will not be sitting here next month. That's a given. We've got two seats open, and there's three candidates running. So we will have new members sitting at this table.
At least one.
Yep, at least one. So don't forget to vote on Tuesday, June ninth.
May ninth.
May ninth.
When your kids are not at school.
When my school, my kids are not at school. We're also gonna do a, a food budget and menu discussion, subcommittee liaison assignments, and appointments of LPAC representatives. This is a new, this is new. It's like NSPAC, but it's for the English language. And so it's a new advisory committee. So they'll be added to our liaisons.
So we, but we don't current, so we don't currently have anyone appointed to LPAC.
There is no LPAC.
Oh, interesting.
So we do, so we have, we've established an LPAC over the past four months.
Okay.
They've held two meetings.
Okay.
And now we need liaisons from the school committees to attend.
But we don't, it's new. We don't actually have anybody that is currently there that, yeah.
Correct. And it's, I did attend the last meeting, wrote a web, and the ELD teachers did an amazing job. There were probably fifty participants who attended that meeting.
You say five zero? Wow.
Wow, that's amazing.
So amazing.
Great.
That's exciting. Anything else for agenda items? Erin, what do you want to add for us?
There's your chance.
You can add anything you want.
I think I'm good.
All right. Joan, is there anything you need added?
No, nothing at this time.
Approval of bills and payroll. We are doing it online. You're good. Audience sharing. Don't all run up.
You can clear.
Nope. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Boredom to death.
Okay, we're good. All right, so there's no other business that comes before us tonight. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion that we adjourn the Northborough School Committee meeting at nine thirty-four.
Second.
Motioned by Erin, seconded by Bryce. Roll call vote unless there's a discussion. Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself as a yes. It passes. We are adjourned at nine thirty-four.